This meeting is now called to order. Good evening, everyone. Monday, March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Councilmember Tanya Seaver, please lead us inside for a salute. Maybe see. Mrs. Kraus, can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you please read the statement of public notice?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight, and NJSA ton colon four dash ten as follows. The notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building, located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraus. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Havlitz. Councilmember Kwadi.
President.
Councilmember Seaver.
President.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Present.
Council President Scobha.
Present. Unless there's no objections, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of February twenty-eighth and also of March fourteenth? So moved by Councilmember Vanchery.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kwadi. Please call the roll for the minutes of February twenty-eighth, March fourteenth.
Councilmember Kwadi.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes. Mayor, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Council President. This evening, I'm going to ask the council to join me down here on the floor. And I'm also going to ask our three scout leaders, as well as our Boy Scouts, to join me up here as we read a proclamation for our three scout leaders who have spent so much time dedicating everything to this township. And I'm going to ask everybody to join me up here for the reading of a proclamation. You guys are all taller than the scout leaders. This is, uh, this is tough. All right. Well, I want to thank all of you for joining us this evening, all the scouts, especially our scout leaders who have, again, dedicated so much time to this township and to this troop. It is very much appreciated. It is certainly recognized. The scouts and the leaders never miss an event that's happening here in Little Falls. We want to thank all of you for all of your dedicated service to this township and everything that you do for the scouts. So this evening, we have a proclamation that reads, whereas the mayor and council wish to recognize the scout leaders of Boy Scout Troop fourteen for their service to the community. And whereas the Boy Scouts are an essential part of the Little Falls community and have volunteered at countless community events and ceremonies, providing support and assistance whenever requested. And whereas Tony Moreno began his scouting journey as a Tiger Pack, a Tiger with PAC seventy-three in Gutterburg, New Jersey, where he stayed for nine years, rising to the rank of Star Scout. Tony joined Troop fourteen with his son Andrew and eventually took on the role of Scout Master of Troop fourteen in two thousand and fifteen. And whereas Joe Gian Duso started out as a member of Troop fourteen when he was just a kid in the late nineteen seventies. We won't tell anyone. And his son Jack then joined the pack in two thousand and six, followed by his son Jay in two thousand and ten. Joe became Tiger Den Leader and also served as Committee Chair for five years and then as the troop fundraising coordinator. And whereas Alan Stone began his scouting experience with Cub Scout PAC one oh five in Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania, when he was in first grade, where he achieved the Arrow of Light. Alan later joined Club Cub Scout PAC fourteen with his son and became Den Leader and then Club Master. Alan then moved on to Troop fourteen and held the position of Committee Chair, Assistant Scout Master, and then took over as Scout Master. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor James Belford Damiano, along with the Township Council, do hereby recognize and honor these three individuals for their leadership, their dedication, and the countless hours they have contributed to their community. We want to thank you for everything that you've done for us here in Little Falls, for everything that you've done for Troop fourteen and the scouts here in town. Let's hear it with a round of applause for that. And we have these proclamations for each of you to take home so you can display these for all the hard work that you've put in here in Little Falls. Would you like to say a couple of words?
You know, they always give me the mic over the years because I guess I like to talk. But I guess speaking for all of us and for the boys, it's truly been a gift to work with everyone as long as we have. And I wish the troop much continued success as I see what's happening now. I'm very proud of everybody. And thank you, Little Falls.
Thank you. Want to smile for one, uh, one real photo? Let me not block anybody here. Uh-oh. Yeah. I get that a lot.
Mayor, is there anything else you'd like to say?
That's all that I have this evening, Council President.
I'm sorry?
That's all that I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Kusia, are there people in the waiting room that have to be admitted? Can we do that? Thank you. At this time, I'll move on to council reports. Councilman Kwadi.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say that last Friday night, I attended the Friends of the Little Falls Schools Casino Night. It was a great success. And I encourage everybody to, to continue to attend events like this. Sorry, the Little Falls Education Foundation, excuse me. They held their event, their big fundraiser of the year. It was a great time, well attended. It was sold out, I think, before a lot of people even realized that, that they, they should have been buying tickets. And so it was very successful. I know that Operation Graduation, Passaic Valley Operation Graduation is having their casino night this week on Friday night. And so you can, you can find the details for that on Facebook, I'm sure. And I just want to thank the Boy Scouts for coming and for all that they do for the township. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vanchery.
Thanks, Council President. As Councilman Kwadi just said, I also attended the event on Friday for the Little Falls Education Foundation. It was a great time being with all the folks from Little Falls. So that was very nice. I also want to take a moment to, to recognize the Boy Scouts. I know they're all outside taking some pictures here. But, you know, definitely to Joe, Tony, and Alan for all the great work that they've done over the years. Because as the mayor alluded in the proclamation, anytime we needed the Boy Scouts, they were a phone call away and they've always come through. So they've done a great service and it's good to see that, you know, the new generation comes in, there's parents involved. And hopefully they'll be able to live up to the standards that Tony Allen and Joe set. Couple of things, as everyone knows, this Friday at six P M. at Town Hall, we are going to raise the flag to mark April first as Autism Awareness Month. So we invite everyone to attend. We'll have a few words from the mayor, read out the proclamation, and then we'll probably have some of the kids from town help with the raising of the flag. So if you have some time on Friday, please join us at Town Hall at six P M. I also want to mention, as Deputy Chief Brian Proll handed to us prior to the meeting, next Wednesday, April sixth, at the Falls Kitchen from ten A M. to twelve noon, it is Coffee with a Cop. So it's an opportunity for the residents of Little Falls to come out and have some conversations with our great Little Falls Police Department. I know Deputy Chief Proll and his staff will be there. So it's a chance, if anybody is around on Tuesday, stop by the Falls, I mean, I'm sorry, Wednesday, stop by the Falls Kitchen from ten to twelve, sit down and have some interactions with the Police Department. Couple other things on my end is, as I've been working on the Memorial Day activities, I have to say, you know, Councilwoman Havlitz and I have made some really good progress when it comes to setting up the events on Friday, May twenty-seventh, as well as the parade on Saturday, May twenty-eighth. So continue to look for updates as we get closer to that. But we are looking forward to having things go back to normal, especially when it comes to the parade. And then, you know, not to forget that afterwards at a parade, we will have the ceremony that'll honor the men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice. Couple other things on my end, too, is I just want to recognize, you know, there's a Girl Scout troop in town. There are the Girl Power Robotics Team. And most are in the fourth grade with a couple in third. They are actually heading to Houston, Texas, in another month or so, as they will be representing the Mid-Atlantic States at the World Championships for Robotics. You know, Councilwoman Havlitz and I had a chance to look through their presentation prior to their competition. I have to say, you know, they're pretty impressed. So it's great to see that the girls are going to be heading to Houston in a month or so to compete for the title of world champion. So we wish the girls in town the best, and at some point, we'll have them in as well. Lastly, one other thing that I'm, you know, hoping to find out is, and I know, I think Mr. Crockett's on the line as well. Mr. Crockett and a few other residents have reached out and, you know, I'm working closely with him and also Herb Rikda from the American Legion. You know, we're trying to figure out the legacy of Little Falls residents who served in the Civil Wars and other wars that may not be recognized right now at the memorial. So more to come on that. But, you know, as we did previously for Michael Hollander, when we found out his story, you know, we recognized him. It's something that we can hopefully do for some others to make sure that, you know, all those from Little Falls are never forgotten. That is it for me. Oh, and sorry, one last reminder. Next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, April ninth, will be the Little Falls Recreation and LFAC's Opening Day Parade. It takes place at nine A M. They start at School One on Stevens Ave, and they will make their way down to the field along Patterson Ave, followed by a brief ceremony to kick off the start of the softball and baseball season. So just want to let everybody know. So if you see some road closures on the ninth, it should be brief, but just know it'll be related to the baseball and softball opening day parade. That's it, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Vanchery. Councilmember Seaver.
Thank you, Council President. First off, congratulations to the Boy Scouts. The proclamation was wonderful and very well deserved. I do want to thank all the residents that have been making donations for those in need in Ukraine and appreciate everybody who has personally reached out to me and asked how they can also provide assistance for those in need. Also, just wanted to also report Saint Agnes Church's food pantry, as you know, serves our community here. And lately, they are in need of toiletries and are doing a toiletry tree drive. Those are things like bar soaps, toilet paper, feminine products, anything like that. And those can be dropped off at Saint Agnes Church on Union Boulevard. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
On April twenty-second, the senior advisory is going to be doing the spring fling, which we, which will be held at the Civic Center. John Moreno, a local musician, and his group will be playing at that evening. If those who would like to attend, there's no charge for those seniors in our town. Please reach out to the rec and call Mr. Pace or Tyler or call the Town Hall. Mayor?
Yes, I just want to put on everybody's radar, Council President, that starting the end of this week, there are going to be overnight road closures on Main Street here in Little Falls. Much like we saw two years ago, there were road closures on East Main Street in Little Falls for a water main replacement. That one went from Patterson Ave all the way down to between Brower Town and Lower Notch. Similarly, the Water Company is going to be making a massive infrastructure improvement, starting here around Union Boulevard down towards Route twenty-three with a water main improvement project with the same idea, replacing their old six-inch cast iron mains with, I think they're up to sixteen-inch mains that will also then be connected to all of the homes. So the nightly closures will begin after rush hour at about seven P M., and they will go until four A M. Local traffic will be permitted through. If you live in the area where the road closure is, just notify the officers that are there and local traffic will be permitted. But the road will be largely closed. Detours will be set up. The detours may vary as the project moves, but for the most part, I believe, you know, unless they're in this section here, Montclair Ave will be one of the primary detours over to Route twenty-three. So just be aware of that if you're traveling down Main Street at night. But again, this is part of the Water Company's infrastructure improvement projects that they're doing in many towns. This has been scheduled here in town for a number of years, and it's always to ensure that there is adequate water pressure, not only for residents, but for fire hydrants in the event there is a fire. So that is something to keep on your radar if you're going to be traversing Main Street at night, starting later this week.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Wenzel, do you have anything for this governing body this evening?
Nothing to report, Council President.
Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only. So moved by Councilmember Vanchery.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kwadi. All those in favor to open to the public, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed this motion, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address. For the record, comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the react reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Mr. Kusia, is there anyone? Can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, you just state your name. You don't need to state your address.
Okay, um, I'm Priscilla Orango. I'm here with my husband, Michael Orango. We live at seventy-five Aranda Avenue. And we would like to discuss an issue concerning thirty-three Stanley Road. For the past four years, the owner of this property has rented it out to Montclair State University students. With each group of boys that have come through for the past four years, it has worsened. The situation has been to the point where we, at least twelve neighbors have petitioned against the, this problem. And we have mentioned the nuisance that we have all been experiencing, especially over this past year. We did send this letter to North Caldwell and to Little Falls, but there has been no solution, no response. On this street specifically, every single home has children from the ages of three months to eleven years old. There are constant cars in the street, Uber drivers coming up and down, cars being revved, cars, car doors being heard. The way this property is maintained is absolutely unacceptable. There is garbage all over it all of the time. There are parties being held constantly. There are fights in the streets. There are students roaming our streets constantly, walking on our properties, doing things to our properties, urinating on our properties, and then some. It's a constant, constant issue. We call North Caldwell Police, we call Little Falls Police absolutely every weekend. There's illegal parking. They use the streets as though they are a permanent parking for their friends and for their own use. They're even now beginning to charge at their door. So I don't know if this is even legal, but the most recent has been valet parkers. There have been people with valet jackets parking their cars up and down Veranda, Stanley, Beasy Street, all around the block, disturbing the peace of both Little Falls and North Caldwell residents.
Thank you. Do you have anything else? Hello?
No, that is all. That's all for now. Thank you very much.
Does the council have any questions? Can I just, Councilmember Vanchery?
Hi, the address again was that you said thirty-three Stanley Road, correct?
Correct.
Okay, questions? I know where that is. When you call, what typically happens if you call the police? Have they been able to respond and break up the parties or is it just?
Both North Caldwell and Little Falls have responded. They have broken up several parties. On some occasions, they come, give them a warning, they leave. On some occasions, even though they have come, fights have broken out after they have left. And so the parties don't always officially end.
I was going to say, Council President, maybe it's something that Chief Post and the staff can look into.
Mayor, has your, have you been aware of this issue that there's been disturbances at this property?
Yes, this house is a known issue. I know the police have been there on a number of occasions. I know Chief Post and Deputy Chief Proll are aware of the address and the issues that continue to arise there. I would encourage you that as you notice any violations, to continue to call the Little Falls Police Department, not emergency line. The police will continue to respond and will continue to take action if necessary. I encourage you to continue doing that. Do not be discouraged by them continuing to have parties there, if that's what they're doing. And, and hopefully, you know, action can be taken over time here to address this issue and bring back the peace that you deserve to have in your home.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Can you hear us with surprise?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, your name, you don't, you don't have to state your address.
My name is Brian Cronice, and thank you, Priscilla. I'd like to jump on that same issue. And, Mr. Mayor, you were saying that, you know, potentially some, some actions can be taken to, to, you know, bring the peace back. I was wondering if you could elaborate on that. But just before you do that, you know, anecdotally, over the weekend, I took my dog out on Friday night at ten o'clock, and there were four, four gentlemen on the corner in valet jackets. There were about fifteen gentlemen in the driveway, just, you know, standing there, waiting for something to happen. When I took a right off of Veranda onto Stanley, there were cars bumper to bumper for the whole entire street, so much so that I had to make sure I had my dog on my neighbor's property because two cars could not pass at the same time. So whatever action you could do, can do to restore this peace would greatly be appreciated. And please respond to my former question. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Cronice, the one thing, well, I, I only know about the issues that exist there from an outside perspective currently. I will sit down with the chiefs and explore this in greater detail and see exactly what type of action may be permissible to be taken here at this property.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And if, if, how, how will we get notified of the steps and for the conversation, conversations that will be happening?
Sure, I, if you don't have my, my cellphone or email, I'm happy to get that to you. But I'm certainly accessible. If you want to send me an email, I can keep you apprised of the steps that are taken, as they're taken. Happy to keep you in the loop because I would certainly not be happy if the house next door were causing these exact issues. So it's something that should be addressed to the extent possible, and it will be investigated further.
Thank you very much. That's all for me.
Yes, I understand. That's up to me. You won't miss your opportunity. We don't, if you want to go to the podium, you have an agenda item. You're welcome to go to the podium. We don't raise hands here.
Jim Doran, twenty-two Route Circle. Good evening.
Is this agenda items, Mr. Don?
I wanted to follow up on that question since it was.
On what question, sir?
The issue of the occupancy in Stanley Road.
Well, if you'd like to talk on that, I'd let that speaker speak, but you could come up on general items and we'll talk about that. Right now, we're under agenda items.
Alex Krasnawetz.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing this incident. It's been a long go, ongoing, ongoing problem in our neighborhood. Little Falls and North Caldwell, but up against each other along with Cedar Grove. And this house has just been a constant problem. One thirty on Saturday, I guess, Sunday morning, somebody revved their engine and went up my street. And it was, it was like a movie scene. I'll confirm that there are people parking cars. I remember what it's like being in college, you know, it's something that sometimes gets out of control. But this is a quiet neighborhood. This is not a college neighborhood. And if there's something that you can do, we're here as neighbors. We want our neighborhood to be compatible. We've had other incidents in North Caldwell where the guys, there was a soccer team here one year, and they would come down the street on Sunday mornings and pick up the garbage. We just want them to understand where they are. We're a residential neighborhood. We'll cooperate, cooperate with them if they cooperate with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Mr. Kusia? Have a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi. Second, second by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor of closing the public signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Councilmember Seaver. Second, second by Councilmember Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Kwadi.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes, have a motion to open the meeting to the public for all general matters. So moved by Councilmember Vanchery, second by Councilmember Kwadi. All those in favor of opening the meeting for general matters signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the council meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are, I'm sorry. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
The floor is now open.
Good evening. Andrew Baggett, seventy-eight Franklin Road, Denville, New Jersey. My little falls interest is one oh five and one oh seven Main Street between Center and Stevens. I have a couple of concerns. I'd like to ask the mayor a few questions, if possible.
Go ahead.
Can you tell me the closing date of the PNC bank lot?
No, at this time, I don't know that there's a definitive date.
Just give me, uh, anybody, Council, Wenzel?
Sir, 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 your question was answered. There's not a definitive.
Hold on, he's pointed to him. I want an answer.
Calm down, calm down.
But don't rush me off.
Calm down.
This is an important, this is an important issue.
Calm down, calm down, calm down. We're here to help. Calm down. We don't point fingers here. We're here to help. Calm down. Council Wenzel, you want to answer that question? Because the mayor said we don't have a definitive date.
Right, Council President, if I may, through you. As you are aware, we have been in the process of negotiating the purchase of the PNC lot. We are waiting with bated breath for PNC to. We are uh, waiting with bated breath uh, for PNC to uh, come down from their corporate ivory tower to finalize the closing for us. So it is in uh, we, the township is uh, ready. Uh, the question is, when will PNC decide to uh, have their corporate people uh, sign off on moving forward? That's so, we don't have a date because of that reason.
So it's a ways away. Uh, what would the certain, what would the certain, we've been talking about this since nineteen ninety-two, I.
Well, Ms. Baggett, if I can, I understand, I, I can understand through you, Council President, excuse me. Uh, I can understand and appreciate the, the frustration, uh, well, of the, of, of the mayor and council. I know this has been a um, a major uh, issue for the mayor from day one as well as for the council. Uh, to secure this parking so that the residents of this town can have uh, available parking for the wonderful uh, enterprises that are downtown in that area. Um, unfortunately, uh, it takes two to tango. And we need PNC to uh, simply do their due diligence and have their people sign off on it. It is literally, uh, if you were to ask me, uh, you know, should, should it have occurred? Yes. Uh, but we're talking about maybe um, days, weeks, something like that, whenever, whenever PNC gets back to us. So it's very, very short.
Township is prepared to close as soon as within a couple of days' notice. Getting a response from PNC can, has been and continues to be the issue.
How many spots are tied in with that parking spot, with that lot? How many spots are going to be transferred? So when that is bank is no longer, it's an office building. How many spots of that lot are going to be portioned off to the bank lot?
There are going to be, I believe it's five spaces in very close proximity to the bank. That will be for uh, patrons to use and there will be ten spaces in the furthest back corner of the lot for the employees of the bank. If it ceases to operate as a bank, which seems that may be the case uh, based upon, I'd say at least Facebook lately. Uh, the spots will cease to exist for the benefit of the bank and will become the municipalities for use twenty-four seven. While it's a bank, those spaces during banking hours will be dedicated to the bank.
How are the talks going with Mr. Sestone's property that you put in your preliminary parking plan? Of a hundred spots between the Mr. Sestone's property, the PNC lot and the tearing down of three homes. In, on June tenth of twenty nineteen, you mentioned that there was a hundred spots there for the town to gain. How many spots are in Mr. Sestone's lot and how is that going? How are the talks going with Mr. Sestone?
Sure, his lot, and I don't have the plans in front of me right now, I believe added about fifteen spots to the parking lot. Uh, lately, it seems he is not interested in selling or leasing the property to the town.
That's all there is, is fifteen spots over there?
I believe that's all we were.
Okay, so we're talking about thirty spots, right? Thirty spots that the town is not going to have out of your hundred that you mentioned?
No, I said about fifteen. I don't have.
Fifteen from the bank and fifteen from Mr. Sestone. That adds to me is thirty and you had a total of a hundred.
Incorrect, during banking hours.
Well, I, I don't care when it is. There's thirty spots that we're not going to have that are, exact, right?
Incorrect. At night, they will.
Well, I don't, but during the day, whatever it is, or when people want to park there. Just those thirty spots, right? Mr. Vetery, just at a planning board meeting, is looking to get sixty-three spots for an, for his, so he can build what he wants to build over there. Thirty and that's, that's ninety-three spots of, you mentioned it's a hundred spots over there. They're all gone. Where's everybody else going to park? Yeah, smile at me and laugh, right?
I, I haven't smiled and I haven't laughed. I sit here because you clearly have no concept of shared parking, which I have explained on a number of occasions. What that means.
Let me tell you about shared parking. Shared parking is not.
I will not respond to any additional questions.
We're not, we're not going to do, we're not going to do this.
Yeah, you, I, I, okay.
No, we're not going to.
You want to know something, Mr. Mayor? I am this far.
We're not.
Putting a stamp on a letter and filing a lawsuit of this town.
Do what you want.
Over thirteen forty-one, which is in violation of a state law on parking.
We're not going to.
You cannot take away parking when you can create it somewhere else. And I am very close, Mr. Mayor, to filing a lawsuit against the town.
Mr. Baggett, I can't stop you from doing that. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. You will not let me finish a sentence, uh, so it's impossible for me to answer those questions at this time. If you would like, I can continue with the explanation of shared parking and why variances for parking in downtown spaces are anticipated. And the reason for that is this, it is anticipated that there will be various types of usage in, in all of the retail locations that will be upcoming in current plans and future plans for downtown Little Falls. What that means is that some of the retail space may be used as an insurance company while other space may be used as a restaurant, while other space may be used as one of any number of imaginable space of usages. And what is anticipated is that during the day, the insurance company may be busier between nine to five. And that uses of that like would be busier during the day where restaurants may become busier from five on throughout the course of the night. So those spaces that you are uh, screaming about a variance for uh, are the spaces that will be used for a number of uses over the course of a day. So to say that he is short a number, uh, again, that's what he is seeking a variance for. There's been no approvals granted at this point. There's simply been discussion before the planning board. Yet you stand here, uh, you know, indicating that that's what he will be short and that the town will be short. I, I'm, I'm honestly not putting the argument together, uh, because it just doesn't seem to make sense that you're even considering PNC lot uh, in this equation whatsoever right now.
I am, I am considering it. I've, I've picked the numbers. You know, and I. The problem, the problem, Mr. Mayor, with shared parking is the whole transit village processes, you stay at home. You, you walk to the train station, you leave your car at home. Now, I know most people don't take the train. A small percentage of the people take public transportation in a train. But those people, they're not going to be leaving, they're going to be leaving their car at home. So shared parking doesn't work. Today's day and age with COVID and all this staying home, where are those people going to park? Who, who, who polices, who polices shared parking? When I come home and there's, he had to work late, the baker, he's got to stay late, he's got a, 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 a wedding coming up on Saturday, he's got to work late tonight. Where do I park?
There's no policing of shared.
Well, that's the problem with it. It sounds beautiful on paper, but it just, it doesn't work. We, we can go on, Mr. Mayor. We, we, we can move forward if you, if you would like. I can see you're annoyed.
Can I say something, Council President?
Yes, the floor, Councilman Quadi.
Mr. Baggett, you have two buildings on Main Street?
Yes, I do.
How many parking spots do you have?
I have no thumb. I am grandfathered in.
So, so you believe in shared parking?
What, I don't, what do you mean?
Well, you provide no parking spaces for the residencies and the businesses.
The town, the town provides my parking, yes.
But so that's a shared parking concept. You should not be arguing against the concept of shared parking when you have residences and businesses, excuse me, sir. You have residences and businesses that you have no parking for.
Yes, so.
So that's shared parking.
Well.
You're standing before us.
We're, we're doing all this development and we're counting on shared parking. That's the problem.
Correct.
It, it, but it just, it just doesn't work.
And we're purchasing a lot to provide more parking.
And half of it's gone to, to the facility over there and the other lot.
You don't understand, it's not.
You're never going to get Mr. Sestone's property.
It's not gone to the facility. It's shared parking, just like your business is and your residents have.
Can you tell me, uh, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Seber, on December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, the ordinance thirteen forty-one was nixed. Can you give me a little insight on why that was put off the shelf?
I cannot recall a specific ordinance from two years ago.
It was the removal of all the parking on Main Street in front of my building without me being notified. And then it's illegal because there's a state law that says you can't take away parking when you can create it somewhere else. And we have since January of two thousand and fourteen, this transit affiliate spot we're going to get. And you want to break the law against me?
I am not familiar with any law, but I'm.
Okay, very good. Then it's, then it's, then it's.
Mr. Baggett.
And it's the mayor's.
Mr. Baggett, we're not going to be going through this exercise, what you're trying to do. Do you have specific questions?
I want to know, uh, what, going forward on ordinance thirteen forty-one, what are, what are your plans on Main Street over there?
Absolutely. I'm happy to explain.
Yep.
It is the intention of the township during the upcoming streetscape to make the sidewalks more pedestrian friendly. And in doing so, we'll be widening the sidewalk, which will reduce the way, the lane width there, which will necessitate the elimination of parking in that section of town.
Where?
This, between Stevens Ave and Center Ave.
On what side of the street?
Both sides of Main Street.
Both sides of Main Street are going?
Correct.
Both sides of the, I'll see you in court.
Okay, Mr. Baggett.
Is there any other speakers that would like to come up? Uh, for the record, you don't have to say your address. You could just say your name.
Jim Doran.
Good evening, Council President.
Um, I was rather puzzled, uh, when, when we, when you were speaking about the use of the house um, uh, across uh, twenty-three for students. Uh, aren't there zoning requirements that would um, have some impact on a, a use like that? Are there?
No, there are no zoning.
Counselor, would you like to address this?
Fortunately, this is, this uh, issue is not unique to Little Falls. It is an issue which comes up in nearly every community that orders or has a uh, institution of higher learning within its uh, within its borders. Um, and so what the problem becomes is that um, the, it is town cannot uh, zone out people who wish to reside together.
Okay.
Uh, there are certain prohibitions on what can be done so that um, obviously, all the things that these people have been talking about, uh, the noise, the garbage, uh, the need to call the Little Falls Police. I see it's on the border of Little Falls and North Caldwell, so uh, that's why I think both uh, communities policing are being called. So those type of enforcement aspects can be done in terms of zoning that i- it's not available to any town in the state of New Jersey to do. And it's been an issue for many, many years and many towns have tried to do it. And unfortunately, uh, there's very little power that townships have with regard to that. Because once people decide they're going to reside together in a communal living, the township is precluded from making choices as to who can live together and who cannot live together.
I believe the closest any town ever came to being successful in this was Hamden, Connecticut, home to Quinnipiac University. And after several lawsuits, I believe the municipality ultimately lost. And the greatest extent of uh, managing college homes was that they are required to, I believe, uh, fill out a paper that just indicates that they rent to college students. Uh, and that was the greatest amount of control that they had over any of the regulation of college homes.
Mm-hmm. That's my question.
I agree. Unfortunate, agreed.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, I, um.
Do you have anything else, sir?
No, I have other, uh, I have interests with um, millennials and Zs and um, it, there are difficulties that stem from the fact that they live in a different world than people who grew, who um, went to high school before uh, the internet. And I'm rather fascinated by that, but how, how uh, to interact successfully with them is a, um, if I, if I, if I come up with any ideas, I'll pass them along.
Thank you. The floor is open. Can you hold on a second, Mr. Bag? With all due respect, I think Mr. Fernandez, if he wants to wave his right to you. Go ahead, Mr. Baggett.
Just, uh, one other thing, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the Department of Transportation, um, study that was done on Main Street back in November. But there was a study done on Main Street, the traffic flow, from the New Jersey Department of Transportation somewhere, something like that.
No, I don't think I've ever spoken about that.
I'm calling for your resignation and Council Wenzel needs to go in violation of a state law on parking, ordinance thirteen forty-one, and you two people need to go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The floor is open.
Louis Fernandez.
Mr. Fernandez, uh, before you speak, I know you requested at the last meeting if addresses could be exempt from uh, talking and talking to my colleagues and counselor and the mayor. You do not have to state your address. Um.
Actually, I was gonna.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I was gonna, I was gonna bring it up because I've noticed it. Thank you. Um, but before I start, let me, um, let me say that uh, it was nice to hear Cynthia's voice, uh, Mrs. Kraus. Uh, welcome back. And at least I'm looking forward to uh, to see her uh, sitting on that chair. Thank you, Cynthia. Um, and um, now let me continue. In reference to uh, Stanley Street and all the residents and all the uh, nuisance that these college students put the neighbors through, I, I can only say that I'm, I'm sympathize with them. As you know, I had the same issues with a, a an illegal apartment right across from me. And um, even though in the, in the winter, it seems to be, uh, they, uh, they seem to hibernate. The same landlord that has, yeah, that had that apartment, of course, for my house, has quite a few homes on Jackson, Harrison and whatever, and which are being rented to college students. Like I said, winter they hibernate, the problem is the spring and the summer, when they all come out, like the other neighbors will say, at one thirty in the morning, two o'clock, two, two AM and so on, with the, with the nuisance of the cars, wrapping up the cars and all that. Um, but I'll keep my eyes open and I'll notify, I will call the police if that happens. Hopefully, we can, um, we can eliminate this type of uh, people on residential areas. Um, next is, um, I, I wrote down a few topics. Is I want to thank you and your colleagues from uh, for uh, not having permission, my address.
You're welcome.
Uh, and lastly, I'm gonna bring up a subject that's something that happened at the last planning board. Uh, after sitting down as a member of the board, actually, uh, and listening to the presentation, which was, as you can, you were there shortly. So maybe very lengthy, very, very lengthy. Um, it was open to the public, only like for ten or fifteen minutes. Um, I hope that in, in this special uh, planning board, which is going to take place on the thirtieth, I hope that uh, the residents, if there is any residents that want to make a, uh, they want to express simply their opinion, which they're entitled to. Um, they are given the opportunity and they are not limited by the amount of time after, which will have the same time at these developments. Which will have a lengthy amount of time if if, if it's needed. Um, but I just want to say that I'm deadly, deadly against all the variances that have been presented in front of the uh, in front of the planning board because I believe at this point that is greed, is not to benefit, is not going to improve the township. It's not going to do anything if the building goes down, you know, twelve inches or whatever. If instead of having seventy-one apartments or whatever, only fifty are constructed. After all, the land was there. The ordinances were there. The building code were there way before they even planned to put the building up. With this treaty, contract or whatever you call it, it's trying to do in order to make more profit. He's trying to go over it. So imagine if everybody goes over the ordinances than, than, that you people put into place. It will be a chaos. Why bother having all these meetings? If here comes an outsider with a whole bunch of um, expert experts, whether it's in. whether he's in traffic, engineer, architect, whatever, and they bypass it. So why are we wasting our time putting all these ordinances into place? The ordinances are there to be obeyed by everybody, not just by the poor people. By everybody, whether you have plenty of money to spend on a tourney. Most, and I'm sure you see it on a daily basis, every time you have a planning, a planning, you attend a planning board, that most people, most homeowners, don't go there with architects, engineers and things like that, because they cannot afford it. So when when this treaty contractor comes in and wants to do all these things that I'm I'm all for it. I really am. I'm all for renovation, improvement, whatever you want to call it. But please obey the laws that are in place. If the building can only be three stories, so be it, it's three stories. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, you know, the mayor and myself attend the planning board meetings before the meeting. As a meeting starts, the chairman asks me as a representative of the council, if there's any residents that come before the governing body, if there's any concerns. What you've just mentioned tonight will be brought to the chairman's attention as well as those other board members. Yes, it was a lengthy and, yes, thank you, sir, very lengthy, but it was also a project of four building structures. So it's quite a large project and the initial comments should be exact, so the public and this and the planning board members know exactly what's going on and have good asked the questions. That meeting again is going to take place on Wednesday. You'll have an opportunity to speak and ask questions. All residents will have those, that opportunity as well. I can't dictate to how the chairman will give you how much time to talk. That is at the courtesy of the of the chairman who runs the planning board meeting. So that will be up to him about the length of time of what he feels fit to give to the residents to ask questions and speak. Go ahead, Mr. Fernandez.
You want me to say the name again?
No.
I forgot. And I think I mentioned these are the chairman, I think I asked the chairman these questions the last week. I guess no public is allowed.
I'm sorry?
No public, physical.
Oh. The public are allowed, but they're doing it by Zoom, sir.
I understand, but like he's somebody coming here.
No, they're, we, he, the the planning board is not going to be in the this council chambers. They're going to do it, they will be doing it for Zoom. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, they're still going to run it from Zoom.
I think I already.
Yes, I know. And I'll pass that along as well. Does the council have any questions? I call it, okay. But I also do want to mention for the record, this is a redevelopment project. So it's a little bit different than just a regular project that a developer comes to the township. Mayor, do you have anything you want to add?
I do, just to clarify procedurally from the planning board perspective, much like the council meetings here, Mr. Fernandez. I think your confusion was the, your comments were limited only because the questions and comments that were to be provided during that public comment portion of the meeting was to be tailored to questions regarding the architects and the site plan and plan engineer. It was not open to general comments on the project. That is for a later time. And I know you said it was only about fifteen minutes of public comment. That's because there were no additional questions of those experts and professionals at that time, and that's the only reason. So you will be able to make any and all comments that you will have during the general and open public comment portion of the meeting.
I hate to disagree with you, Mr. Major, but as you know, Mr. Kirkpatrick, Gilpatrick, I do that.
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to offend him. Even said that due to the length, due to the late hour or whatever, he was going to be very limited to the public. If those, he was only, they were only, he was only going to allow about fifteen to twenty minutes of comments. It wasn't because I made a you know.
It was closed once there were no more questions for those professionals.
He said, he said, I mean, you can go look back in you on YouTube and look at the the last couple of minutes and he didn't say, he did say that. Thank you.
Is there another resident that would like to speak this evening, Mr. Grusha? Yes, can you hear us, sir? I'm sorry, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Danielle Peterson. I live on Veranda. I'm a new resident to North Caldwell. I share the street with the Little Falls college students. I just had a quick question. With, I know you said earlier that you've had issues with residencies and college housing in a residential area. And there's really not, I guess, much that we can do except to call in to the police department and make our complaints. But is there any way that the owner can find out on this or we can bring him towards the council? Being that it is a Little Falls residency and having him be aware of these issues? Because I don't believe that he is aware of how bad it is getting.
I'm sorry, your last name is Peterson?
Peterson.
Yes. So thank you for joining us this evening. The landlord of the building, if there's a violation of the building department, it gets noticed because the landlord becomes the becomes that responsibility. However, if the tenants are causing a ruckus or are they making quality of life issues, then they'll become responsibilities for those summonses that have become issued at that given time. For instance, if they are making noise late at night, it's the residents that will be ticketed and be given a violation. However, if there's other code violations, the owner is going to become responsible. At times, there's, there are situations where bedrooms are being used and and a part of the house that shouldn't be used. Or if a kitchen is placed in the establishment that shouldn't be placed and we find out that and those violations are given out. Mayor, you have anything you want to add?
I do, Council President, I have to review the ordinances that we passed because I believe a number of years ago, this council passed an ordinance that indicated after a certain number of, I believe even noise violations, the property owner was to receive a ticket. So I will, and that was part of what I intended to review with the chief and deputy chief this week and see if we are at the threshold where the property owner should be receiving a summons at this point, not just the tenants of the house.
Yeah, I think there was something about the decimeter that we put in there that if it went over a certain volume. Right, the landlord would be responsible. So we do our best to control that, those situations, so the quality of life is decent for all our residents.
Yeah, because we we also did call recently this past summer, the health inspector because of the trash and the mice that were coming in because they were not throwing out their trash. And the beer cans and bottles were just piled up. In fact, they put them behind, and I took pictures. They put it behind the garage for weeks to the point where it smelled. And unfortunately, there is a new neighbor, she is not on with us because she works at the post office, but she is just like me where we both moved in recently onto the street unaware of the college house and how how bad it's, how bad this is. And, you know, it's just, it's a shame because we thought we were moving into a nice residential area. And we've already had to call on health inspections and, like I said, the police department. In fact, they even tried to call the police department on the fire chief's car for North Caldwell and tried to get the car ticketed just as a retaliation.
I don't, I don't know if you heard the mayor's comments before, but please, if you feel that there's any violations or disturbances to call the police, also, the mayor has heard every resident, this council body has heard all the residents' concerns. And whether it's one resident or twenty-five residents.
Yeah.
We will do our best to ensure the quality of life is sustainable in that area. And I'm sure the mayor tomorrow morning will be looking into what is the powers of his office and what he could do there.
I hope. I I'm just, I'm sorry, I just don't mean to harp on this.
Apologize.
It's just, I, I'm just coming off of a three-month-old. I was pregnant during the last nine months of this fraternity college house. And I've had a lot, like two fights break out while I was pregnant on my lawn. So it was very hard to try to deal with this this college house. And I just, I just hope that we don't have to put our house up for sale because of it. Like, that's just the bottom line. It just unfortunately looks like it's it's becoming that way.
There's no need to apologize. I'm sure the mayor will be on it first thing tomorrow morning.
One more quick question, if I, if I can, renting to the college kids, do the owners have to give like awareness or or present it to the neighborhood or I don't know, post it somewhere where the neighborhood would have to be aware of that situation as far as renting it to college or residency?
No.
No, okay. And, okay, okay.
If I might add to this lady about the garbage. Same issue. And in fact, if you recall, Mr. Mayor, I took some pictures of the college students leaving garbage for days. And the way the ordinance is written is that you have to give them with, they have ten days after you remove. So by ten days go by, you know, the garbage truck has passed twice already. So the thing is that how do we stop these college students, these uncivilized people, this way, to throw the garbage out? If it's not garbage day, it should be like, it should be limited to X amount of hours before the garbage truck goes by, not whenever we feel like it. In three days, the garbage truck will come and take it up.
Don't, don't we have that ordinance that you you have to, you can't put the garbage out before dusk the night before? I believe we do. Six P M, yeah.
Yeah, but once, once you put it up, once correctly, and I, I think I still have the the text that you sent me. The township sends the owner a summon after, after you have received a few complaints, mine included. Remember, I sent you a text, a few texts. And you said that the ordinance, you told me that the ordinance calls for, within ten days, he had to take care of that issue.
Correct, but this was a bulk trash issue that you're referring to? So they received what's called a notice of violation prior to a summons being issued. And when a notice of violation is issued, again, this was for a bulk amount of trash. This was not bringing out a garbage can earlier, leaving litter. Right, but I think what they're referring to here is more of a litter issue than a bulk trash issue. And we do have different ordinances for littering in town. In fact, we have actually through this council, increased the fines for littering. The issue is the litterer needs to be seen littering in order to be issued a violation to that individual. So I, I, again, that's something else I've been thinking about. I'll work with the chief to see if a, if a household can be responsible for it. That's a difficult issue because the plastic bag that ended up on my front lawn or the red solo cup that ended up on my front lawn might not be from a party or an event or anything that I had. Like you indicated, the wind a day later may have blown that onto my yard. So should that individual be issued? Now, again, this is a different set of circumstances here with a known location. So again, I will work with the the police department and the township attorney to see what can be done.
Councilman Quadi, you have something you want to?
No, I just, I think that the issue that this resident is bringing up is a little bit different than you're describing. I think what she's saying is that they're not bringing the garbage to the curb.
Right.
That's a completely different code violation. Yeah. Different issues, though, yes, but having there needs to be addressed clearly. I don't think anybody here does not.
Is there anyone else, Mr. Grusha? Have a motion to close the public comment.
Some of them.
Motion by, motion by Councilmember and Cherry, second by Councilmember Quadi. All those in favor of closing is to the public signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Deputy Chief, you have anything you want to add this evening?
Good evening. Good evening. I just got a quick thing, Council, Councilman Ventura already commented, we're having the coffee with the cop next week. I presented the flyers. The mission of Coffee with a Cop is to break down the barriers between police officers and the citizens they serve. So this is typically a October initiative with the timing of Chief Post's retirement and me coming into my new position. I thought it was prudent to get out there, show my face and meet with the community members. So anybody that's willing to attend, coffee's on us.
Donuts?
Anything else?
Kitchen ninety Main Street. Our, our Junior Police Academy is going to go full force this year. We've advertised it on our social media. If anybody's seen it on Facebook or Instagram. Just a reminder that the applications that were handed out are due back in no later than March thirty-first. And we are starting to plan for our August National Night Out, so we can put that on the calendar. We'll be doing that again this year.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Moved by Councilmember Ventura, second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose that signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.